This conference will now be recorded.
All right. It is 6:00 PM October 1st and we're here with the Monterey Black Board. Frank and Justin are in town hall here. Susan, it looks like you're online. Can you hear us?
I can and hopefully you can hear me too.
Yes. Before we start the meeting, I just want to ask everyone to have a moment of silence for Barbara Gothier. She was the former town accountant and 20-year employee of the town. And she passed away recently. Thank you. The first item of business is the election warrant.
Sounds like a chicken pecking at something.
I'll come in tomorrow and sign it, Roger, wearing a mask this time.
Before we get too far into it, I just wanted to note, Dennis, I see you're online. Is there any particular item you're here for?
No, just happened to notice the dash is on.
Okay, yeah, we're dealing with that next. So I... Yeah, I sent out an email to New England Aquatic Services. And I just explained that we don't have any $30,000 budget at the moment. We have a $25,000, $500 budget. So this is actually nothing new. They've always tried to turn to Friends of Lake Garfield for covering overages, which was what we're trying to get away from, but this is kind of a transition here. But I just explained that all of the hourly rates seem to be good. It's just the amount that they're doing, which wasn't even really specified. It was just implied by the fees, the phases that they laid out. I explained that we have budgetary constraints and he responded that he understands. And we'll just have to, we're not going to change any of the rates which are in the bid.
How many hours did he put in? Because I looked at the 23, 23 in the late season, almost 106 hours, almost 99 hours.
$30,000 would be, which we're not doing $30,000, but it would be 218 hours in the fall and 145 hours in the spring.
See, if you go back to what he did in '23, he did like 100 and 106.
Yeah. And...
I'm sure his hours were based different.
Part of it too is the four per member's. So if you divide by four, I think you get the amount that they're actually out on the water working. But, so part of what's gone on over the years is we've dashed. You can do more, you can do less if you don't keep up with it.
Right.
It will take over the lake.
Yeah, but if you read his reports, we're keeping up with it. He moves hours to the next. He says, well, we didn't use all the hours allocated. We'll do it, save it for the spring or the fall.
Yeah.
So I mean, what we're doing is good. I think my point would be is that the number of hours he has in there should suffice. Not that we're going to use them all, but we'll come close to getting everything he's done.
We're in the ballpark. Dennis, did you have anything to add on Dash?
Usually they don't do the full contract in the fall. So, you know, if you only have 25,000, that's more than sufficient for the fall.
Oh, yeah, we, the 30,000, the way he laid it out was two phases. One part in the fall and one part in the spring. It was heavily or slightly favored towards the fall. But we'll just have to work with what we have. And if Friends of Lake Garfield decides that they want to go out on their own and make a contribution or hire Dash work, that's their prerogative. And I spoke with Michael Germain about that. And it's really what's been going on for 10 years, right? Close to 10 years?
Yes, I believe so.
So if he wants to do, I mean, that will be up to Lake Garfield Working Group and New England Aquatics, whatever they determine to be the best, whether it's to do the full amount in the fall and a little bit less in the spring or vice versa. But in any case, I think we're good to sign it for all the hourly rates and...
It's just...
Yeah. There's no opposition to signing it?
No.
Definitely not.
Yeah, sorry. The next order of business is appointing, hiring a firefighter, Dennis McCarthy. So these are just indefinite appointments. And I would move that the town appoint Dennis McCarthy as a firefighter for indefinite term.
I second the motion.
Any other discussion? We'll call a vote?
Yes.
And yes, so that's three yeses.
Do we do an appointment letter for him on the fire?
Technically, we do and I can...
Because I have the one that you sent for Mark Hyman.
Yes.
So basically, we can just copy that, right?
Yeah, I have templates, actually. So I can either produce this for now.
Because I made one for Mort just in case.
Okay, and I, well, I was also gonna, and usually we haven't signed them in the past. We just send them with our names at the bottom. But...
I just wasn't certain.
Yeah, we have done them. We, Susan and I in particular, and I think Frank's been involved on some of them, have discussed appointing versus hiring. And we've erred on the side of overly just doing it all. We're not going to get into that discussion tonight because we're having a short meeting. But in any case...
So I'll let you take care of those.
I'll take care of it, yeah.
Because I let Mort know, because I was in a meeting last, yesterday. I let him know that he would do that.
Yeah, I'll get that done. Sometimes I'm a, takes me a week. Up is appointing Vicki Weisman to the Conservation Commission. So I would move that we appoint Vicki Weisman to the Conservation Commission for a term of three years.
I second the motion.
Any other discussion? We'll call a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, so that's also a unanimous vote. And so that's...
I do have one question. Do you know what, does she have any relevant experience or is she just a total newbie?
Well, she sits on that, what, you know, she's participated, participating in preserving Monterey in protection of homeowners and residents. She's got a...
From my dis...
MBA, MBA, so I...
She is the MBA, MBA. And by the way, she, she mentioned to me that the answers on that form were short and she hoped they were sufficient. And I said, yes, I do, I do think they're sufficient. She's been working with the Concom, or she's been considering it for quite a few months now, pretty seriously, and been going to meetings and meeting with Noel.
Okay. So she has some idea of what's involved and that, that's enough. Like I did notice her, the MBA, MBA is great, but it's not actually relevant to what Concom does.
Yeah, true.
So, yeah. But plenty of people do it without having experience. They just have to get the experience. It's fine.
Yeah.
When you said three years, what, do you mean to this date or do you mean to...
I mean to October 1st, '27, yeah.
You don't mean to the May 1st, you know?
Not to the fiscal year. Yeah, there's a couple, that's another perennial topic. We've been doing June 30th, especially with kind of the discretionary or ad hoc appointments. But we don't, or I don't mess with the more formal ones like Conservation Commission because the law says it's supposed to be a three-year appointment, staggered terms. We're off kilter a little bit and always have, unfortunately, with this particular commission.
Yeah, I was just wondering, you know, if it could be like, yeah.
No, I understand, I understand. And we, we have fiddled with the ad hoc appointments a lot to try to get everything to line up and they really do now. But, you know, Conservation Commission being a fairly formal appointment and a body that frequently sees aggrieved property owners, is best to not do anything that might be even slightly illegal. And we do see lawyer, we do see lawyers.
We get letters from them too.
We get letters from them too. So, so yeah, it's a full three years to be October 1st, yeah. Good question. And I did think about it and we have thought about, but that's one of the few left that we really don't mess with.
It's just, it's just harder to keep track of who's on what days.
It's very hard to keep track. It's very hard to keep track, so we mostly have searched over. I just want to double check. I have in my notes that we already voted on this. I just want to confirm.
On what?
On Vicki.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Just tonight?
Yes, right.
Yes, yes.
I vote three yes.
That's what I have too. I just wanted to make sure I didn't write it down prematurely. Next up is the accountant contract. The biggest thing that I did, or the only change that I'm aware of from last year was with compensation.
I saw that where you changes, it's got to be voted on in the town meeting.
Yeah, the problem was, there's a lot of really good things, like we talked about, starting a financial contract in October. If we ever were to switch, it makes a lot more sense to do it in this time of year rather than June 30th.
Right, right.
But the payment's always been awkward and we weren't even really following what it said because usually we'd go up in July anyway, even though the contract said all 12 months were the same. So Donna okayed the new wording. If there was any concern about that. If there's, if there's no...
I didn't have an impression. I saw what the payment, you know, town meeting.
All right, if there's general agreement, we'll go ahead and sign it.
And I think, I'm just going to reiterate what I think was already known. But part of the reason to not have it end at the fiscal year is because of end-of-year fiscal things. It would be really bad to not, to be between accountants or switching accountants at that time of year should the contract ever lapse and we wish to choose a new accountant. That would be terrible timing, so.
Yeah. So I think I'm happy with it now.
Yeah.
So...
Does it require all three together?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so I'll sign that one too when I come in tomorrow.
With a mask.
With a mask. Roger does not need any more of my germs than he's already gotten the last two days worth of meetings. I was trying to pretend like I wasn't sick, but I made it very clear today that I am.
Administrative assistant.
So I haven't really, I haven't heard anything from the Collins Center. So based upon our last week's conversation, I'm just going to start working forward, moving forward.
Yeah.
This week.
Yeah.
Make some phone calls and see what we can go from that. That's six applications, I think it's five or six that I have that were submitted.
Do you want help interviewing, screening?
I have an experienced person who I know very well who's hired and fired lots of people.
Okay.
So she's going to help me initially, some phone calls and, and kind of parse out a couple of people.
Okay.
So we can see if anyone there.
Oh, just to touch...
But I will say though, I'm sorry. If we do hire, or if we do bring somebody in for interviews, I may ask, you know, if one of you might want to just sit down. You know, just to kind of understand and so that they, so that they know what's going on.
I think, I think definitely it would be helpful to have a board member in on those interviews. Not more than one, but one. So Frank will do that. As far as the internal candidate, I'm thinking maybe well, after we've had a chance to interview any external candidates, we, the board can make a decision and keep that in mind throughout the process. If there's any particular questions that we need answered by town council or the accountant or treasurer, probably treasurer, we should probably think about those in the next week or so. Just questions like, how would we do this benefit? If we're making two part compositions into a more, a benefited position? Or if we have questions for Collins Center, if we think they might get back to us about best practice for doing something like this about rates of pay? Because we have two different rates of pay. Should we combine them? Should we keep them separate? Because I think that definitely is an option with its benefits, although also some complicated nuances.
Your, your point the other, last week was well taken though, that your concern is that this job could grow and then it would grow beyond the capacity of one person to do both jobs.
Yeah, I mean, that's definitely one of the thoughts in my head, but I won't, it'd be, I definitely like keeping that option open while we consider what our other options are because I think there's a lot of benefits to bring someone on from internally. Even though there are like notable drawbacks like that in particular, you can't ever really take one person beyond 40 hours. So...
But I think you have to add, are the skill sets, the skill sets of the town clerk, is that different from the skills that you would look at for administrative, administrative? I'm not tending to tilt that, but I think we need to have that conversation.
Well, I guess keep in, keep in mind that we do have that option as we move forward, but we'll still move ahead with external...
Interviews. Yeah, it's a process. We'll have a discussion.
Mickey?
So I've given this hard enough cognitive thought. And as I think I said last week, I don't see a problem with having two different pay scales for the two different, it's two different jobs. You're sitting here doing that job, you're sitting here. As far as the skill set, you would have to meet those. And, you know, I'm thinking like, you know, can you write letters and do that sort of stuff, which maybe able to do. As far as benefits, you're only going to, you're going to have to pay the sick pay. But you'll only be paying one, I mean, not sick pay, health benefits. Sick pay and holidays, you'd only be paying one set of those instead of two.
But health insurance is big.
Health insurance is very big. But here's another thought. And this is a problem that is going on not just here in Monterey, but all over the country, if not the world, is hiring people and limiting the time that they can work so that you save money. And that's not really a good thing. You know, we complain that we don't have people, young people coming and living in this town, but this is the only, one of the only places that hires help is, you know, town hall. But you don't want to give them benefits, so they can't work here. And I think that it's, it might be short-sighted to base it on that fact that you're going to have to pay health benefits. And I think it's just something that you should look at what you can get. And I don't know that this would work. I don't know what his skill set, what he's doing. Town clerk, it looks like he's doing a good organized job. And I never had any problem with any of the people that worked in that, either one of those offices there. So I just think that, don't base it on the fact that we're going to have to pay health benefits. It's something that if a town can offer full-time positions, we should do it. It's, it's just beneficial to our population, you know, it's keeping people in town. He may have to leave, a person may have to leave a position because they can't get health benefits. They can't get the hours that they need. So the different way to look at it.
Well, I think...
Don't base it just on the dollars.
I agree, Mickey. And I think one of, one of my concerns that Susan kind of emphasized or just brought up again is that this position, I think, at least I can speak for myself, envision becoming its own position with health benefits. So we'd end up with kind of like a 30, 35-hour or 40-hour week position and an 18-hour week position instead of one 40-hour week position.
Then, or do you put some extra hours over onto somebody that would work in the town clerk's office, you know?
Yeah.
And I don't know that.
I mean, I guess, but potentially, should that come to pass, maybe you make a call as to which, where you want to fill in another part-time position. Do you want an assistant clerk? Or do you want to shift hours more towards the clerk and get another assistant in the front end? And you make that call based on what the workload is and what the skills are at that point, I guess? What the need is and what the skills you have are and what skills you want are. But we're not there yet.
No, we're not there.
Maybe we look at all the options before we make a call. But I do feel like it would be good to know how we handle that if we chose to go that way and what it would, what the cost is. Like, we can choose not to be that, make that a limiting factor, but we still need to know what the number is.
Yeah, well, and part of the problem with health insurance is it can go, can range from a single plan to a couple plan to a family plan. So that can be, I think your family's almost double at the same time. So more, more than double, I'm being told. So, so, and just because you have so-and-so, you have Joe in the position now and he's on a family plan, doesn't mean the next person takes the position as a single or a couple. So we can't really base on that, but it's good to keep in mind. I think what we'll do is Roger will interview, or will Frank and Roger will interview. Roger will screen and see who's up for interview. Frank and Roger will interview. We'll come back to the board, depending on what those results are. We'll come back to the board for either final interviews or a final interview and then kind of keeping an open mind to the, to the different options and just think, ruminate on it for the coming weeks. We'll ruminate, pretend you're a cow. All right, we'll come, we'll come back to... The next item is the November special time meeting warrant. I don't actually have a draft. I've been working on a couple of the items, but I don't, well, I do have a draft, but it's not worth anything looking at.
I have a couple ideas, gathering up FY '24 bills. It might be a thousand dollars or something like that by the time we're all done. The other thing, I'm going to send you a, forward you an email that went on between Beth Greenblatt from Beacon Integrated Solutions and Donna, the town council, concerning the renewable energy working groups work with HSP has solar. Because they were the only ones that bid on the solar array. And there was a conversation, Beth was, her question had to do with, we, she saw that we voted, the town voted on doing a 20-year lease, but she wasn't certain about a 20-year contract. So whether or not that should be voted on at town meeting. So the pilot, definitely she said should be, but this thing they call PPA, which is some sort of program, I forget what it means. But basically it came out that, after the conversation, it sounds like it's going to be best to have both these two pieces voted on at town meeting for a 20-year contract. But I'll forward you the email that went on between the two of them because it's, the whole conversation's there between the two of them. That's the only other sort of like technical warrant that...
But they'll draft that up?
Yeah, yep, yep. There's also going to be a, Donna's putting together a memo to give to the select board concerning the choice as well, what it all means.
But there's, it's a green light. They're going forward with it.
Yep, they're moving forward. But there'll be a point where initially the thought was that because of what the lease says, but what the article said about the 20-year lease, it sounded like the select board could just sign off on it. But Beth wasn't certain about that and that's why we had this conversation. She had a conversation with Donna. So it sounds like there may be a warrant needed, but I'll forward that to all of you.
So another overarching question is if we're going to have free cash certified, which Eric said like the last day of October?
Well, he said the last day of October, then I asked him if he could have it earlier and he said, he didn't give me a date. He said, yeah.
But didn't we turn it, didn't it in November or December?
Well, last year was later, I believe, because of the, it doesn't really make sense, but I think it was because of the rebound. It fluctuates, but one year, I think two years ago was in September, which is very early. But one of the things that I realized about this November town meeting is that we really need to be on top of our free cash certification. Now, if he tells us he's going to have it October 20th and we have to sign the warrant on the 15th, we'll probably go ahead and sign it. But if it's two days before special town meeting, it's a problem. And there are other things we could do to fund it, but free cash really just makes so much more sense to a lot of this stuff. So he said he could do it earlier. I trust him and I know that we've done it some years incredibly early, but...
Last year was incredibly late.
Last year was late, but I think it was because of the...
It could have been, this year it went really quick, kind of a conversation with Don Clausen went really quick.
The tax rate?
The tax rate and all that sort of stuff. Him working with, him working, Don working with Eric was earlier than what it sounded like usual.
Do you meet with Eric on Wednesday?
We haven't been, because of vacations and things like that, but I can, I can...
Well, I'm just wondering if we could nail down, and here's another thing we can do that I've always kind of thought about and never done, just because it's not typical for Monterey. You can put on a warrant article, and Donna said it's typical in some communities, just that you want the amount of money, so we want $5,000 for this. And then decide at town meeting where it's coming from. And in some places, that's... And then decide at town meeting where it's coming from, and in some places, that's actually more typical. Um, but in Monterey, it's not so typically, we've, we've always, we've always, um.
Specified in advance where it's coming from, right?
Yeah, so.
If it's legal to do it and we think we'd have it by the date, then maybe we do our, but we write the warrant. To allow us to do either one?
Well, what we've done, what we've done in the past, frankly, and I, we've never really talked a lot about it, was just. And I, I recall at least one year where we kind of signed the word without having the free cash certified yet, just on the hopes that it would be. Um, and if we're very confident, we can kind of do the same thing. And frankly, this special town meeting is not about a lot of money issues. There's a little money here and there, but it's really not a money meeting. So it's not a huge deal, but I just wanted to mention that while we're talking special town meeting. Did you, by any chance, Susan, since you saw stuff about the five-year recycling contract?
Right, so I, I've touched base with them again, apparently, although they finalized the contract, it's not yet ready to go to the towns. And I, I'm in conversations, and I'm basically saying, look, they're like, well, do you really need it? And I'm like, well, yes, our town meeting's on the second, we have to mail the warrant by two weeks before that, and we have to finalize it so we can print it, so. It's kind of emergent, so that was, you know, the ongoing conversation as of today with the back and forth. So, I, I'm hoping we'll get a actual written, written contract. By next week, but I don't have it. So I try to, I try to, but I don't have it.
If, if not, I mean, it will just go on in May unless we have another town meeting, but. Other towns must be in the same boat, and must just be doing it at the spring town meeting?
And the, the only thing I can say is that I, for sure, we will have the summary sheet of what the changes are from the existing contract. We, if we have to, we could, because I, I'm pretty sure we need to actually get this thing done, um.
Is there, is there timeline?
I, I think there is, I mean, technically, the contract, it's a contract extension to a contract that ended in twenty twenty-four. Like, with a new, if, we're now without a contract. Um, I, it just took too long for them to negotiate it, so. Um, yeah, so I'm sort of feeling like, maybe we can, can we put something on the warrant? If you don't have the contract language, you put, and it maybe that we don't even have to have the contract language in the warrant. Can just say, are we willing to approve a contract extension? I, I don't know, is it worth asking Donna that? Do you want me to ask Donna that? Do you want to ask Donna that?
Um, I have to, uh. Ask Donna, I have to draft and work on her, with her about a bunch of the warrant stuff, so if you could just. Send me that thread, I will just forward along with all the warrant stuff and try to get that taken care of, um.
So basically, the, the nature of the question we'd be asking.
What's that?
What do you mean by that thread?
Did you have an email thread about the five-year recycling contract?
It's not a, a straightforward thread, because it's with several different people, individually, as I get bounced around.
Why don't you just, why don't you just reach out to Donna then and kind of explain the situation and. And, uh, we'll know by next week, or not, we'll know by next week, but try to come up with some kind of answer for next week.
Because we may not want to put the whole, i- if possible, we would, I would prefer us not to have the whole contract on the warrant, it's too long.
No, I, I understand, but I would figure that in a situation like the one you're in, they typically give us standard. Wordage for the warrant, no? If a bunch of towns are.
No idea. I have no idea, yeah.
Figure it out with Donna, please, and then. If they don't get you a contract, I, I don't know what to do, but I'd have to assume other towns will just wait till the spring.
Or unless they have another special town meeting this fall, I, it, it just seemed, the timing of it seemed very strange to me, but I'm like, okay, this is my first go-around with this. Maybe this is just the way it's always happened, but. Maybe that, I think that, maybe the merfs are more used to the towns that. Like with the ADU thing, that have mayors or city councils, where it's not a yearly issue. I don't know, because there's a lot of big towns involved as well.
The park, moving on, the park grant. Um, Roger sent me the letter where the select board agreed to put it on the warrant, and I. Forwarded it to Donna, and I said, do we have to put this on the warrant? And she said that we probably should put it on the warrant. Or, or tell them that we're withdrawing from our, from the grant application.
I've been in contact with, uh, a person at the, the state. And, just to try to get some understanding of making sure that it's two separate pieces, the park and the. Uh, small communities grant, the open space, and it is two separate things. I let her know, I said that there's, because of the issues, um, the concerns of the library trustees with the, uh, with the. Grant and the limitations and restrictions, that we would probably be looking to not vote for, which she said, okay.
Would we still get reimbursed for the open space fair or unfair?
Yeah, it's two separate things.
So, should we just withdraw entirely from the park grant?
I don't know, uh, I, I'm not certain how that, I guess we could.
I, I think at this point, we're either putting on the warrant and asking people to vote no. Or, or we just cut to the chase and withdraw up from the grant.
I think we withdraw, just, you know.
I can ask.
Can we just double check that we're not putting?
Yep.
You know?
Because my initial understanding was that we had to put, if we put it on the warrant, even if we turned it down, then we were okay for the open space grant. Um, but if we don't put it on the warrant, I don't know that we are still okay for that. And that's a bigger pot of money than the three thousand dollar park grant.
Yeah, and did we get reimbursed for the open space recognition lineup?
Not yet, no, because I was.
So that's the problem.
I was, I was, I was nervous to pay, the invoice is not knowing how the grant money would come back to us. So I, I haven't paid it yet.
Okay, well, we'll see, we'll see, but it seems a lot cleaner, if possible, to just tell them that we're withdrawing from the park grant.
Yeah.
Um, and then. That will be another confusing thing on the warrants. The only other item that I just want to touch on regarding the warrant, and I'm not sure it will make it on this special time meeting warrant. Because it might not make sense, um, is the land donation on Route fifty-seven. Um, so. As I understand it, uh, the property owner reached out to.
I talked to him.
All the board members.
Yeah, I, I know Susan, I, I talked to him.
I talked to him too.
I sent time on the property.
Yeah. So, as I understand it, the, the town, as long as everything continues to move forward in a positive way. With the property owner and the town, and everyone supports it, I do. It is my understanding, town meeting will need to vote to accept the donation. Um, and we'll need to specify what it's for, and. My inclination is that we would accept it as a park under the jurisdiction of the Parks Commission. Rather than for general municipal use, or rather than as a con-con property, it just seems to make. Sense that it would be accepted as a park. Um, that being said. Um, it would either most likely be this November or in May, and I don't want to rush it, but.
Yeah, I think, you know, talking to him, I guess the last Thursday. You know. He was gonna talk to the select board members.
He's scheduled to come in next week.
Okay, so, I think we need to hear him out, what, I, you know, what. Who, who has their family, where do they look, and, you know, whatever, you know, just hear it so we can discuss it. I mean, to me, it has, I think, needs to be a spring issue.
Yeah.
Because.
I, I agree.
You know, if we did what you said, you know, you know, we got a upkeep, we got, you know, what are we gonna do with it, you know?
Yeah.
Um, I'm sure, you know, there may be some pushback from the neighbors.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I think it actually does make a lot more sense, I have known about the, it for a while, but there was a. Uh, effort to keep it on the, keep it out of the public, uh, uh, discussion, while it was in the kind of very early stages, so. Um, that kind of hamstrung us as far as getting it on the fall. Um, but, that being said, we, we want to have a plan and have all the Ts crossed and Is dotted.
Yeah, I mean.
We'll work on it for May then, probably.
Yeah, I think, you know, the secret's kind of grant money to do stuff and things like that.
And I, I think we'd need some better guidelines for what he's okay happening on that land, and what would it. How much is it gonna take to keep the land maintained? Um, it's an unusual lot, since it has both water and sewer, well, I guess, septic, but. But, you don't really want anything built on it, um.
Uh, I think if you had to have a public park, you'd want some kind of restroom, I mean.
Yeah.
Well, the maintenance costs and everything.
Yeah, well, that, and too, if you wanted to do a beach, I don't.
What I would envision, what I would envision is. Deactivating to the degree that requires at least effort, kind of the utilities, to the degree that we can. And, you know, working on a, a small parking area, but other than that, making it mowing and plowing, if we even plow it.
Yeah, but I think if you want it as a park, I think you have to think about restrooms and things like that, I mean. You know, people are gonna go there for two or three hours, and two is how do you give it a beach form, I haven't.
Well, I'm not, I, I'm not headed in that, well, my vision i- isn't in that direction personally, but that's just me, it's a discussion for everybody. And I think as far as bathrooms, we can explore different things, but as. I think. If you just look at the different areas like, um, the Lake Garfield town beach versus what they do up at Bennett Pond. Probably if you really want restroom availability, you do porta potties, probably. But I don't know, maybe, maybe you do invest in a bathroom, it. I guess it depends on what you envision, are people going there, just walk around and have a little picnic, or are they going there for. You know, a whole day?
I, I don't know.
And if you're, and if you're thinking you're gonna have some type of celebration there, or like, I don't know, I'm making this up, fireworks or whatever. Then for that event, you get some porta potties, you don't necessarily have to have permanent facilities for them. If it's a special event.
Are you gonna, you know, it's a good sized lot, are you gonna put tennis court, pickleball court, I mean, those kinds of things, how are you?
Dog park.
Dog park.
The third.
Driving lane.
Monterey politics.
Third rail, exactly. Dog parks and pickleball, pickleball.
Um, yeah, I mean, there's.
We hadn't.
There's possibilities, um.
Well, I think we gotta anticipate the questions people are gonna ask.
Keep, keep also in mind that if we do anything to really attract people. Think about how many people already come to the Lake Garfield beach, which is tucked away on Hereingham Road. All of the through traffic on fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven, yeah.
Between Great Barrington and New Marlboro and people coming up from Connecticut. Uh, and how, all the traffic that you get at the Lake Buell boat ramp. Um. You, it, you might be offering a great public service to a lot, to a lot of people. And very few of them might be Monterey taxpayers, so.
Yeah.
And I'm not saying don't do it, I'm just saying. That is, to me, is one reason to kind of keep it just more natural and just kind of more land preservation-esque rather than.
Yeah.
Public recreation park.
That's fair.
I don't know.
Yeah.
Let alone the noise that might be generated from. People recreating there, we already have enough noise in that neighborhood.
They never call me back.
So, alright, well, here's the good news, uh, he's coming in next week, uh, around seven. Uh, at least tentatively, and we'll talk a little more, as far as I know, by the way, the only. Um, kind of cost to the town was just naming it, was just, uh. Doing a name kind of in honor of the family, uh, but beyond that. And I think beyond the general idea of not really seeing it developed, I'm not aware of any real restrictions or asks.
I don't know, I didn't get into it with, not that, but he said he had an offer in the. Sounds on that, and that, that was not the vision of his father, his father tore down those before it was there, so.
And I did have a conversation with him about the possibility of housing, when he mentioned that it already had water and septic. But it was very clear that that was not their vision.
Yeah, yeah, and honestly, when it's all been discussed, I'm just gonna put it out there. Part of me wonders if the town is the best owner or an organization like BNRC, and I don't. I don't want to. I'm just wondering with kind of the goals that are trying to be achieved. Um, the town is good at certain things and, and organizations like. MPL, Monterey Preservation Land Trust, and BNRC are kind of more used to owning other types of properties, and they, anyways, we'll go forward with the town. I just wanted to. Keep that, I keep that in the back of my mind, because at the end of the day, what we want to achieve is kind of land. Preservation, great open space. So. Um, other than that, we'll have more on the, we'll work on those couple items for the. Uh, town meeting, but it seems like the, the land donation's gonna make a lot more sense for May. But we will continue to, to work on that this end of the week. Moving on to old business. The Monterey Schoolhouse, Donna is back to working on, and she's gonna give us a playbook. Um. A step-by-step guide, which I'm just waiting on. It starts with appraisal and then it moves to RFP, but I don't have details beyond that, Mickey?
So, I was thinking about it after Susan mentioned it last week, and you had said that, uh, somebody from. Had asked you about doing a housing in it. And I thought of it in the same context as what happened with the church, or was happening with the church. They immediately put it out, you know, to be sold and a lot of things happened. If it would be possible, I mean, we don't have to sell it, do we? I mean, is it, or do we sell it? So why not? Open it to this person who thinks they would like to use it and change, use it as housing, maintain the building structure as it looks. Uh, or similar to it, whatever, uh, and see if they, give them a time period, six months to see if they can come up with. If it's doable for them, and if it's something that they want to proceed with, before we put it on the market.
Well, part of the problem is, well, what would we do if we don't put it on the market?
So, but I mean, we have, we have somebody who is interested in, in buying it.
Yeah.
Would you have to put it on the market? After you had an offer, if you had, if they offered what it was worth?
I think you could do an offer.
We have to do, we have to go through the steps.
Which, you could show it and give people a certain amount of time before they have the proposal, so they can do their due diligence.
I mean, but you can give people enough time to do that.
Is the concern that this is gonna move too quickly? Because, please don't be concerned.
I'm just saying that, you know, if somebody actually wants to use it as housing. To encourage them would be better than just to discourage them.
No, we are encouraging, but what we need to do is get our act together and figure out how we can actually.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I hear what you're saying, you know, it's like doing the solar, you know, you've got thirty days, here it is, you know, we could. I think we could extend the RFP, so if you get people opportunity to look at it and make some information available, so they can make a sound decision. They all may run for the hills.
Yeah, I mean, true, there, we can have that.
Five minutes of design.
We can have that discussion when we're talking more RFP, and I do know that there are decisions that are gonna have to be made by the board. Um, because we can put restrictions on the deed and on the house. We can, uh, make those part of the property, um, but we don't have to, so we're gonna have decisions.
So then you can change it later and make it more open to anything.
Well, once we don't.
So you can have parking?
So, so that being said, I mean, I think we, we can keep that in mind when we set the RFP parameters, and we'll show the house. I'm sure there will be kind of like there was for the solar, um, but it's not gonna happen in a, in a, in a rush way, and I think we'd want all parties to have all the information and be able to visit. And frankly, someone wanted to visit a year ago, and I asked Brian, and Brian let us in, and they looked at it. Um, and that, that changed course very quickly. They weren't interested anymore.
Yeah, but you gotta, that was, you have to watch it when you show it, is, uh, is it a safety issue? Cause, you know, I got into that with my brother's house. You can't take people in there. I've never been in it.
So, we're, Donald, oh, it's kind of an act, and then we'll move from there, but.
It's moving slowly now.
I think at this point, no one can think of what the town would do if the town owned it.
No, that's true, yeah. No, we, and I'm, I'm not thinking, I'm not thinking the town has to own it.
Yeah.
I was just thinking of, you know, if somebody, you know, actually has an interest in it, they have the opportunity to make the, a good decision.
Yeah. Um, anything else?
I think the appraisal might be part of that as well, because I suspect the appraisal is gonna note a lot of the deficits with the building, and that gives one the opportunity to assess what the cost of fixing those deficits is.
I, I haven't been, I was in there when we were moving out of the library. We went in to look, to see if we could move in there, and, and I, I was, I was horrified at how that building had been left.
Yeah.
Just a mess.
Really to shame.
It really was. I mean, and it just looked like, you know, it was just abandoned, athwart, pretty much left on the table and left. Very sad.
Yeah. Um, anything else on our old business? I don't think the other items we need to talk about, unless.
I just got a quick question on the fire company lease. We're supposed to start negotiating for a longer one. Is, is Eileen gonna be the chair of the finance committee this year?
I don't know, they're meeting on the sixteenth.
Okay, so, you know, I, I, if we're gonna start meeting with them, I wrote the email copy to y'all on it today. Someone from the finance committee should be assigned to them, but I didn't know if she was gonna be the chair.
Yeah, I don't know how, I, uh, like I said, their plan is to meet on the sixteenth.
Okay.
In any case, in any case, they should negotiate someone, whether Eileen's the chair or not, or.
Right, right, we should get someone, cause I asked down that email, you know, when do you wanna meet? So, I can invite Eileen of the finance committee of the email and say, hey, one of you has gotta be the negotiator, you know, what's the purpose of it?
Um, yeah, Frank, you wanna do that, and then just ask them to select at the next meeting, or at least talk about it?
The only other issue is, so, did you see Mike, Michael, all the money, you know, for this year? For the, uh, the drawdown, eighteen hundred for the flow monitor?
No, I haven't seen anything.
He, he, he needs roughly nineteen hundred dollars by November first.
Well, we don't need it, but.
I didn't use that word, it's worth it.
Um, no, what Michael's doing, just to touch on briefly, cause I was talking to him on the phone the other day about the dash stuff, and we touched on it. To do the three-foot drawdown in the easiest way for the highway department, especially during the busy winter season, which is when the drawdown is, there's various equipment that could be particularly useful for tracking, and even if we went this far,
Automated.
An automated opener and closer. So, GZA, the engineering firm, is kind of looking into it and drawing up some proposals. But the point being, when, when Maynard was the highway chief, um, you, in the two thousands, um, he did two, he did two, three-foot drawdowns, and then the third year would be a six-foot drawdown. And he always did them just without all that equipment, without any automation, so he just did them. And I doubt that they were always exactly three feet all the time, because it rains or it snows, and then it melts. And X, Y, and Z happens, and frankly, even with all the automated equipment, it's not always gonna be exactly three feet. Because if you got a big rainstorm, it's gonna go up a little bit, and so, all that being said, what Michael's doing is getting together a plan for, you know, in the long term, to make it as easy as possible. And I think we might be able to fit some of that into the budget this year on the highway budget, and I told Michael that. And I think some of it may be longer term, like we go to special, we go to annual town meeting and we say, we'd like twenty thousand dollars to put this whole system together, so that the drawdown is completely automated and tracked. And maybe that's what we decide is the best, because then all the data is there for any Concom or DEP, or whoever wants to look at it, everything's tracked down to the inch, down to the minute.
Um, I just wanna draw your attention to, you just said twenty K, in Michael's email, it also said fifty K to bring the power in to run the actuator, and I'm not even sure that included the cost of the actuator, or if it was both. But I was like, wait, what? Oh, a hundred dollars for this, and fifty thousand for that?
So maybe we'll have the beach monitor, monitor the water level.
Maybe we should just have, or have Maynard come back and test it.
We'll build an affordable house near the dam in the winter, so we can live there in exchange for opening and closing the dam, which is, by the way, def- what they did in the, in the past, right?
Yeah.
They had houses that people would live next to dams and control the water flow for the downstream mills, so. Um.
Something like that, I guess.
Anyway, I think, yeah, if it ends up being, you know, an unreasonable amount, we probably won't even do it. And we have a certain amount of tracking already available through the current traction device.
Right.
Uh, but I think those are just options, but I told, uh, I told Michael that, and I guess Jim's out for a while.
Yeah.
Um, but maybe there would be money, you know, in the highway department budget, since the highway department manages stuff, or if not even select for expenses for the gauge of how deep it is.
For, for, at least for the first couple of items that were the lower cost ones. It was the, it was the power actuator that, you know, gave me a little bit of sticker shock. But I guess we're waiting to see what GZA says about what would be involved in doing it, so I shouldn't jump the gun.
Yeah. And one of the problems, by the way, with the past drawdowns, and one of the reasons Concom was frustrated with the drawdown, from what I understand, was the lack of record keeping and the lack of kind of consistency in planning. So kind of things were opened up at some point and closed at some point, usually it was October fifteenth, if I recall. But there wasn't necessarily, uh, neat record keeping, so one of the things that is, one of the goals here is better record keeping and more consistency and kind of, if they say to close it back up on January fifteenth, we close it back up and we write it down and we keep track of what happened, so that in the future, they can look at it. So, we're working on it. Town administrator items, any updates, Roger? Um, elevator's working.
So, thank you.
Yep, so, all done. We had a.
There's an email?
I sent it to the, um, the parade group.
Yeah.
Um, I had the elevator company, the state elevator inspector, and the alarm company all here this morning. They all coordinated their schedules. The alarm company, anyone's security, who was out of his time, they did a great job. They, they're like, they usually give us three weeks' notice, and I gave them four days. So, they were really good about rescheduling and everything, so it worked out really well. They did, they were all done this morning. Um, they, um, I'm working on doing some demonstrations for budgeting software, see how that might work, something to, to look at.
So we just, I just do that at five o'clock from home?
Yeah, yeah, Zoom, like you and Steve Pullen is the, on the finance committee, and we'll listen, and we'll go through and look at it.
Are you gonna be on the phone for some time?
I'll be there too, yeah.
Are you gonna do it from home or here?
I'll probably do it from here.
I may come up with you.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, we can do it.
Yeah.
Yeah. And take that, just to sort of look, because, because the concern is, the concern has always been multiple people having access to it, and it's really difficult to do it with some of just the, the free things, or the Excel, or the, some of the other applications that are out there, so just gonna look at it and see.
I, I, Hampton would have a law on to it?
They wouldn't necessarily need to have it, it's really just budgeting software, that's all, it's just like how we.
So it's not tied to G and L or.
It, it is connected, it pulls data from, uh, the Vadar system. Pulls, pulls the data right out. It's, it's not quite automatic, but it's connected to it, so we can pull the data right from there. But it's, it's more, it's more about the budgeting point where we're all trying to access the spreadsheet.
Yeah, I'd be, yeah, I, do, do they have a, I don't wanna get too deep in the conversation. Do they have a segment for monitoring capital and stuff like that?
Yeah, so we'd be looking, we're looking at, uh, for the specific, uh, application, we're looking at four modules. We're looking at an operating module, just a basic operating budget, also looking at a personnel model. So you do all your personnel data, you know, with the, figuring out what people are making, and that ties into the operating budget. And also a, um, a capital, uh, module, so. Things like that.
I'll wait to my questions. I took some notes at home about the funding and your capital.
Yeah, so it's that we're doing that, you, Steve Pullen, you, and it would be like five o'clock.
I'll come up here.
Yeah. Um, the, the Southern Bertrand ambulance invoice came in. I know everyone's always excited about the Southern Bertrand ambulance, uh, invoice. It's, uh, seventeen thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars, so I'll be paying that off.
And that's quarterly.
That's quarterly, so this is the second quarter on that, yeah.
Did it have a quarterly report attached to it?
Uh, no, no, you, I'll, I'll, I'll email, did I get that? I, I got that in the mail, so there wasn't anything with it. So I'll, I'll reach out to them and ask. Uh, and the other thing is, um, uh, on health insurance wise, my, uh, my, my wife has left her position in New York City, and she's coming up here full-time, and she's been on Cobra uh, for the past six months. She'll be leaving that, so I was planning on, uh, doing a plus one with her insurance wise. So we have, we have the budget, we have, with, um, um, Seamus Garrity coming on too. I talked to him about that, and, uh, he's still, because he's under twenty-six, he's still connected with his parents.
Okay. Well, in any case, we have, we have to pay for everybody, no matter what plan they select, and unless we need money at town meeting, then.
Yeah, I think, I think we're good.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think anyone, it's always free to add one or have a family and, uh.
So that was a pretty nice. And, uh, that is, uh.
It, for me. Any, uh, unanticipated business or from board members? If not, from board members, from the public, from Dennis and Nikki?
Yep.
We'll, we'll look at minutes. I'm sorry, I got minutes out pretty late, but, um, I think we can look at nine, four.
I can do, I'd go with nine, twenty-four. Did you read nine, twenty-four, Susan?
Nine, twenty-four? I only have nine, four. I don't have nine, twenty-four. And I, I got, I had nine, four, and then I got, what, the, what did you say, eight, twenty or something? Um, I just received the eight, twenty, but I don't have nine, twenty-four.
I said it as fourteen, fifteen.
Okay.
So I'm not, we'll do it tonight, but, uh, I just wanna make sure.
Oh, I see them. Yeah, I did receive them, but I haven't looked at them because they, they came too late, so, um.
Yeah, I think we'll just look at nine, four. On my end, I'm happy because I'm semi-caught up, but, but if we, and, and we do nine, four tonight, that'll be good.
Did you get, I, I made some edits to the nine, four. They're not huge.
Yeah, I read your edits. Yeah, she said that this morning, and I'm fine with what we have after she did the edits.
Did you have any other edits, Frank?
No.
Okay.
All right, well, I will move that we approved the minutes of September fourth as amended.
Second.
My second question.
Um, we'll call a vote.
Yes.
And yes, I will get those posted. Um. You all set? You're missing?
It's too early to go home.
No, it's not.
Um, Dennis has his hand up. I just noticed it.
We, we can't see him, we just got a D.
Yes, thank you. I do have one question. It just occurred to me that, um, if the park grant uh, at Bidwell Park is, um, denied, um, would any of the funding that was allocated from ARP, uh, may go back to the Pavilion project?
Um, it's definitely possible. Uh, wait, sorry, none, there are no ARPA funds towards the park grant.
Okay, yeah, I was under the impression that, um, that there might have been, so, you know, thanks for that correction.
So, and frankly, Dennis, um, I'm trying to get final numbers on the ARPA funds, and I don't have them. One really crucial thing is going to be whether town meeting approves the funds for the historic district study consultant. Um, because if they don't approve the four thousand dollars we're asking for, then we'll take those ARPA funds and, and shift them elsewhere. Um, assuming they are approved, we'll know that those ARPA funds are, are still going to the same purpose, but. Uh, yeah, we have yet to get exact ARPA funds, but you're still in the middle of the, um, it's phase two, right, so to speak, the engineering and architecture phase?
It's design and, and permitting, if necessary. Okay, thanks for the update.
Yeah.
Thank you, Dennis.
All right, I'll move it before adjourned.
My second motion.
And we'll call a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
From Susan.
When's our next meeting, guys? Justin.
I, I hate to do it to you, but I have two appointments scheduled for next week, for select four appointments. So is everyone gonna meet next week?
I'm gonna move that.
Well, don't we need, when do we need to finalize the warrant?
Um, the following week.
Okay.
So, yeah, we're in a little stretch here, but hey, the more we meet, the shorter they are. There's at least that.
It doesn't bother me at all. I just wanna make sure we get the warrant on time.
Yeah, we'll meet, we'll meet next week and, uh, sign the warrant the following week is my plan. Next week, we'll have the council on aging, or at least Lynn, to discuss a possible raise for the outreach worker. And we'll also have Dean in to discuss the land donation.
Okay.
Meeting adjourned.
See you then.
Yeah, I hope you feel better.